Today's date is September ninth and the time is ten oh one A M. We will begin with our invocation from who'll be brought forward by Dr. Dennis Williams, who's the pastor of Greater New Canaan Creek Baptist Church, Ward Six, and then we will ask Councilman Hartley to lead us in the place of allegiance. Please stand.
Eternal God, everlasting to everlasting, I want to thank you, oh God, for all that you do in our behalf. Father God, as we make ready to partake of this fellowship, we ask, oh God, that your victory reigns supreme. Father God, I ask right now that you would bless this world, its leadership. Bless this nation, its leadership. Bless this state, its leadership. And oh God, please don't forget about Jackson, Mississippi. Father God, we ask right now that you would touch each and every council member. We ask that you would bless our mayor. Lift him up where they're weak. We ask, oh God, that you would cover them under the canopy of the Holy Spirit, that you would bless business as it goes forth. Father God, we ask right now that we'll put aside separate agendas, that we'll take into consideration that is all about God's people. Father God, I ask right now that you would bless our police force, that you would bless the young people in this city, that they will begin to put down the guns and pick up bibles. Father God, we ask right now that you build our city back up to what it once was. Father God, we believe in total restoration, and we ask that you will do just what you said you'll do. What I love about the God is that you said that all things work together for the good of them that love the Lord and are called according to his purpose. Father God, all that we've been through is preparing us for where we head. God, there's greener pastures on the other side. We ask that you would make a way. Father God, right now, we ask that you would change mindsets, touch from the crown of their head to the bottom of their feet. Father God, create in us a clean heart and renew the right spirit. Father God, help us to understand that it's all about you and it's not about us. Father God, I ask that you would bind us so close that one can't fall for the other. We ask these blessings. In the mighty name of Jesus, we do humbly pray. Amen.
Okay, colleagues, are there any opening statements?
No one? All right, thank you. We're gonna go ahead and have the public hearing.
A resolution approving the adoption of and implementation of the Tax Increment Financing Plan, Prado Lots, at Meadow Brook Project City of Jackson, Heinz County, Mississippi, August twenty twenty five.
Is there anyone here today to speak in favor of this item? May come to the podium, please. Good morning. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, I am Gabriel Prado, and I am the CEO and President of Pracom Global Investment Group. If I may, with the respect of the board, the mayor, and everybody in here, I want to thank you for this time. We have this project that has been a long ways, about three years, over three years, at the old McGrays Building, which is Prado Lots. It's the apartment that will be top class right there on Meadow Brook, where it used to be a landmark at the old McGrays Building. It's a project that has faced many challenges, just like we have faced with the city together. And I believe that anybody else, any other developer, would have given up on it. But thanks to this mayor and this board and everybody that has come together, we are very close to very ground on it. It's a hundred and thirty-five units this first phase, and it will have all kind of amenities from pickable cords, you can turn to the next one, see, pickable cord, swimming pool, barbecue, to really provide that anchor to northern Fondren for the redevelopment of that area. We have also been very cautious of an issue that has been very important to the city and the citizens, which it is Eubanks Creek. So we have an extra half an acre in the back that will be living as a green area for extra water runoff, to allocate that green space so that it helps with the downflow of water. And then in the way that my engineers and architects designed this, they did it in a way that is gonna help with a lot of the issues that Eubanks Creek has had for the flooding issue towards the back. And so this is a project that has required a lot of money. Long term, it will be over fifty million. And what we're asking for your support, if you would be so kind, is of a tax increment finance that allows us to put together the final number, and hopefully that we can have you all on site very soon to do a groundbreaking. I believe in Jackson. We're headquartered here. We're family-owned in Fondren, and this is a project that has our name, and that we will stay on until we see it successful, because we believe in the city of Jackson, in the mayor, and the board, and the citizens, and we're not going anywhere. We're gonna continue to fight for this. So I want to say thank you for your time and open for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Prado. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this item? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this item? Okay, hearing none. Thank you. All right, so colleagues, we're gonna now go on to item thirty-two.
A resolution approving the adoption of and implementation of the Tax Increment Financing Plan, Prado Lots, at Meadow Brook Project City of Jackson, Heinz County, Mississippi, August twenty twenty five.
Second. It's been moved in properly, second. Colleagues, any questions or comments about item thirty-two? Hearing none, all in favor? Oppose? Six zero? Okay, thank you. All right. Now we're gonna move to public comments. Colleagues, we have four non-agenda items today and one agenda item. And as your name is called, please come to the mic. Make sure that the green light is on. State your name for the record, and you will have approximately three minutes. At the two and a half minute mark, the clerk will notify you that you have thirty seconds left. When the red flag is raised, we kindly ask that you please cease with your comments, okay? All right, first we have Charles Rush, Certified Trauma Workshop. Charles Rush.
First of all, good morning.
Good morning.
Our Honorable Mayor, our council, law enforcement, our fire department, our citizens. My name is Charles Rush, lifelong resident here in Jackson, Mississippi. I fondly remember coming headed to Jackson when I got ready to head to college, being raised by our grandmother and grandfather. She said, "Boy, you better do your thing. You better do what, you better do well." She gave me thirty-seven dollars. Thirty-seven dollars, first night. We slept in the car outside of where the Athletics Assembly Center is now. So I said that to say this. I'm here now, and I'm a certified trauma-informed facilitator. And of course, what that means, I'm not a psychologist or psychiatrist. But what I've done for the last two and a half years to three years in the state of Missouri where I earned my certification, is going boots on the ground, body on the ground, soul and mind on the ground, in each and every community, from Kansas City, Missouri, all the way back down to the Boot Hill of Missouri, where Blighville, Arkansas connects with Steel, Missouri, in communities talking about what heals, what helps, and what hurts. I want to share something with you about trauma that I learned while doing research for a presentation from a psycho-psychologist. He said, "Trauma is perhaps the most avoided, ignored, belittled, denied, misunderstood, and untreated cause of human suffering." That's a lot, y'all. That's a lot. What I do, I go in and I talk about, yeah, I talk about community trauma, historical trauma, and one I dug that a lot of medical professionals says, "That's legit, Mr. Rush." I call it SIT. I tell people, "Stay away from SIT. That's self-imposed trauma." I talk about healing, but I also talk about self-care. And of course, self-care being anything that's good for you first, but it also makes you feel good. I talk about ACES, adverse childhood experiences, and how that makes a difference as you continue that maturation process. I'm here, boots on the ground, that contract has ended. I'm here where I need to be, in Jackson. I would love to be able to sit down with the leadership at some point and talk about what it would look like to be able to go into each and every community in this city and in this town to talk about trauma. My name is Charles Rush again. Ms. Whitlock has my contact information, and I'll be sending her additional information today. And I'm currently served as a
Mr. Rush.
... for reconstruction on the structure with help. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. James Taylor.
Mr. James Taylor.
Dr. Rosie Riley, beautification of the zoo.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Dr. Rosie Ann Riley, and I'm a citizen of Madison County. But in October twenty twenty-four, I brought the little girl that I tutored to the zoo. That was my first time going there in decades. So I decided that I wanted to do something to help make the zoo, to beautify the zoo. And the first thing I want to say is I would like to commend you all for the great job that you're doing. And I know it has been a difficult task in this city, but you know, I'm not from Jackson, but I shop a lot in Jackson, and I love Jackson. So although I'm a citizen of Madison County, you know, but anyway, I have given you copies of photos of flower beds of the most of the areas that I've done. I have cleared debris. I have attached problems that I have observed and recommendations. Those observations are very important. There are five to ten leaks around the zoo. Most have been there one to two years. The two in the street have been running for a year and still leaking. One is running like a stream. They fixed the water leak at the community center because it was the worst. The high water bills are not because of the animals, but due to all the leaks around the zoo. So I just wanted to let y'all know that, because I saw that on TV. And I don't think you all are aware of all the leaks that are at the zoo. I'm volunteering because I want to beautify the zoo, and I'm not here to complain. You know, most of the citizens, all they want to do is complain. We need to stop complaining and support the leadership in the city when it comes to things that need to be done. Complaining is not gonna do any good, you know, and stop criticizing. So what I decided to do, I go every Monday. Some weeks, I'm there thirty hours. And I've done like two big flower beds, and I've cleared debris. I started in the front. I went to the back. And so this is my project. So the council, city council, men and women, you have everything that I wanted to say. And I wanted to tell you that I love the zoo. I hope that you all can come up with a five-year plan. Whenever you had a plan, implement the plan, do inspections, because you have a lot of people at the zoo. About half of the people that's there are not working. You know, I work harder than the people that's there, and I'm volunteering, and that's a problem. That is a problem. So I just wanted to let you all know that everything is in writing, and I took the time to write that out for you. I appreciate you letting me come up here, and I'm looking forward to the zoo becoming better. And I'm gonna stay there until I can get, you know, everything the way it is. I don't, I don't even care about getting paid. This is my, oh, okay, I thought it was, okay. This is, this is our zoo. This is Central Mississippi Zoo, and it's our responsibility to help. We don't want to hear the complaints. I don't like complaints. So I'm there working. And if you want to work, that's fine. If you don't have nothing good to say, just thank, just be quiet. And thank y'all, and have a great day.
Thank you, Dr. Riley. We also have Ms. Melody Vaughn, missing child.
Good morning. I come to address the council this morning, and I'm trying not to get emotional. But my name is Melody Vaughn, and my son Donald Hewitt has been missing since June twenty twenty-two. There has been limited communication with J P D in the last few months. And I am a social worker by trade. And I come here only speaking of facts, not to talk down about J P D, because it's just like where I work. It's a few bad apples that sometimes spoil the whole show. But my family and I met with Sergeant Sir Kurnia Banks back in May of twenty twenty-five. She informed me at that time that a new detective, Detective Collins, would be assigned to this case, and that give her a few days to review this case. And she would call me. I have yet to hear from Banks nor Collins. There was a previous investigator, Detective Joanna Archer, who has done a fabulous job on the case. She was on the case for a year before she was removed. And whatever personnel issues, I'm not here to address that. It's not my concern. But however, my concern is my missing son. On July thirty-first, I contacted Willie Bozeman by text. First, I called, no answer in my text. I requested a meeting with Mayor Horn, who I voted for, by the way. No response. I called and texted Willie Bozeman again, and he stated, exact words, and I have it in my text, that he would look into the case, talk to J P D, and get back. I have yet to hear back from Mr. Bozeman. I would not allow this case to become a cold case, because I am a mother, and my son has been missing. I work for child protective services. I do abuse and neglect. And if I fail to do my job or fail for my team to do my job, that means I'm gonna leave a child in harm's way. And I expect J P D to do their job in investigating my son's disappearance. Now, I don't even want to label J P D, like I said, I am not critical of folk, because I understand a lot of issues within this city. I live in this city, by the way, have always lived in this city. But I expect a meeting to talk about my son's case. So I'm here as a mother, and I'm asking each one of you all to think about how hard it is for me. For three years, not a word from my son, not a word. And if you go back and look at the whole case, it is a hot mess. The file is this thin. When I first reported my son missing, if you go back and even look at the context, even all of that is incorrect. They did not start investigating for two weeks after my son went missing. So now Detective Archer, there's nothing left. There's nothing there. Time has lapsed, so she can't get a lot of information. And I say this, my son just got put in NamUs. I just received an email today, and that was a lot of help from my nephew who plays in the NFL, just received an email today saying that my DNA has been put in NamUs and CODIS. I gave J P D my DNA back in August of twenty twenty-two. Tell me why is it just in NamUs? So that's why I want to leave you with the lack of J P D doing their jobs. I thank the council for your time here today, and I appreciate any assistance that I can get from you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Next, we have a non-agenda item, Mr. Purdis Williams.
Hello. Good morning again, ladies and gentlemen. Purdis Williams, Project Humanity. Excuse me. We're speaking on the agenda item that is supposed to be regarding Lake Highco and trying to get it back to its previous usage as it was in nineteen sixty-seven, before they closed it for racism in nineteen sixty-eight. Before I mention that, I want to discuss something I heard recently regarding what someone told me J P S's plans were for the lake position regarding a data center possibly, that does give them connection to the Pearl River, with the water that they will need to cool those fans, those GPUs in that data center. So that does make sense. However, someone doesn't understand the pollution that those data centers bring to this area. So let's just imagine driving down Lake, um, Northside Drive and Watkins Drive, and you see a big square building. That's all you have. There is no businesses trying to come over there and establish themselves because those buildings put out too much pollution. They don't have the energy in a city to produce those facilities or keep them running, so they put generators out there, diesel generators out there, so that they can, you know, get the power that they need. Why are they doing that? It's because we're using back out-of-date technology, because we do not want to innovate any further, or how do we say, communicate with our so-called adversaries like China, who has a chip that's three times, three thousand times faster and uses four million times less energy than the Nvidia A one hundred chip. So what we're doing is building big computers while they're building little small computers. We're trying to keep up with them using old technology, and we're destroying the country. I'm really disappointed, because one of those data centers, from my understanding, is gonna be out here on County Line Road polluting Tugalo. Does anybody know when you heat up the diesel fuel, it creates fog in the morning when it cools and hits the ground? The jet stream's gonna take that west towards Tugalo. I know it's an opportunity for capitalism, because we can start selling respirators, personal respirators, to all those students, because that is a test site now. So Jackson, Mississippi will be that same test site if you put a data center there. I'm sure if you take the time to look at my page, it's pinned to the top, Lake Highco video. We can see the potential there. We can see what this city could be if we took the time to get that lake back in order, and the zoo lake, if you want to fix the zoo, because there are pictures online about people swimming and boating over there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, colleagues, we're gonna move down to the consent agenda. There's no consent agenda, all right? Introduction of ordinances.
Ordinance of the City of Jackson, Mississippi, reenacting Jackson, Mississippi Code of Ordnances, Article Two, Section eighty-six dash fifty-one through eighty-six dash sixty-two.
All right, colleagues, this is just an introduction, but I went back and looked at those ordinances, and it looks like, okay, here's Councilman Stokes. It looks like he's trying to reinstate the curfew.
Yes, sir.
You're right on time, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we're trying to do, Mr. President, is save some of these young people's lives. People call it every day, talking about, a lot of these young people didn't go back to school. Curfew is not only at night, but it's during school hours also. If these young people gonna have a chance at life, they must have an education. We're out of poverty, it's through education. These streets are mean, they nasty, they ugly. Fire department pull up most times first when somebody's been hurt or injured. And they're getting younger and younger out here. They're carrying these machine guns that the police department tells us about all the time. I'm not saying that the curfew will solve all the problems, but it's a good tool in the toolbox. We got to keep these young people in school, and I know some fear whether mama need to do her job. I agree. You know, daddy too. But we have a role too. You don't want them to play stick-up, you get stuck up, and you or your little one lose their life on nonsense. Keep these young people in school, keep them off the streets late at night, because that's when them hustlers be out there. Way for those who've never seen it before. The way they, dope boys do it, they start them off washing their car, then they have them to cut the grass, weed eating, next thing they put that dope in their hand. They think they smart, then the teachers, they stop going to school. Then they stop breaking into your house, because they pick up a dead hand. Thank you, Mr. President, but this is the first step in trying to get the curfew reinstated. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, colleagues, that was just an introduction, so we're now gonna move forward with the adoption of an ordinance, item number four.
An ordinance of the City of Jackson, Mississippi, authorizing the Jackson Police Department to issue solicitation permits pursuant to the State of Mississippi Safe Solicitation Act, House Bill eleven ninety-seven, effective July first, twenty twenty-five.
Some of.
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second. Colleagues, any questions or comments about item four?
Did we get the information from yesterday?
Did we receive the information from yesterday? That was requested yesterday from J P D? No? Okay, we have not.
Can we table this then?
I think we need to go ahead and put it to a vote.
Information, and we did not get the information.
Legal.
I don't think we should vote on something that we don't know the details on, and we know we don't know the details.
Chief Jones, would you like to come and speak on this, please?
Mr. City Attorney, make your way on over, sir. Thank you.
Good morning.
So you want me to speak, or you'd like Drew to speak first, or?
Well, we know that there was some requested information yesterday that Councilwoman Clay is asking about. But if you could briefly speak to what this item is, I think we have the votes to pass it, I'm not sure, but we need to, if you could just get on the record, please.
Yes, it's regarding, like we say, House Bill eleven ninety-seven. As Drew stated yesterday, we have to have to have the ordinance in order to address the law that has been passed. We have spoken about the logistics of how the process will take place. Mr. Robert West over at the Jackson Police Department would be responsible for issuing the licensing and permits to address this issue. And we've also spoken specifically about how the police department will enforce it. It's my understanding that prior to it being officially passed, there is a timeframe. There's a matter of maybe thirty days before it actually passes and before it will begin to be enforced. So that's my knowledge of it. But again, we've spoken about the process and how the process will take place, and we're prepared to move forward with, with House Bill eleven ninety-seven, as well as the ordinance that they're asking to be passed.
Thank you, Chief. Now, yesterday, it was requested that a gentleman would be here from J P D. I don't recall his name. Is he here?
Robert who?
Robert West. Is he here?
No, he's not here.
Okay. Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Mr. President. The, this question may be more for Mr. Martin than for the sheriff and chief, and the, but it's just, my understanding is that there's just one permit allowed each day for a specific location. And so my And so my question is the mechanics of, do we have a, you know, how many locations there are across the city that, 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 I know there's a lot of people, you know, you see people out there soliciting. But how, what are the mechanics of somebody actually getting the permit and then going to that location and does he have a permit that he carries with him? A number of those type of area of questions, just on the basic mechanics of how this is going to be overseen by the, um, Mr. West.
So Drew Martin, city interim city attorney, they'll go to the second floor, J P D, to obtain their permit. Once they have it, or whether they have it or not, if somebody is seen soliciting in public, J P D will have the authority to stop and ask them to show their permit to make sure they have one. If they don't, there'll be a series of progressive questions and interview-type situation they can ask the person to essentially educate them about the requirement to have the permit and to move them along to another location. If they keep showing up without a permit, then that escalates as to what J P D's options are. Also depends a little bit on what the person is doing. But that's the short version is that.
So a follow-up question. Do they get a, a, um, does the permit for a specific location or is it just, once they get the permit, they can find a specific location?
First, they have to identify a location and time period.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Excuse me. Uh, Mr. President, I, I, I think the issue we're dealing with now is not as much law as it is respect by members of this body of each other. Uh, I think it'll pass, no question. But we do not want to go down that slippery slope of playing click politics and if we can get everyone voting on our item together, it helps the council and the city as a whole. If a council member feels, um, that they are uncomfortable because of lack of information, I think it's good to respect that council member's concerns. And if that mean hold it to the next meeting and let everyone have a chance to ask questions and get those questions answered to make sure that that person might can vote for something that, that, uh, that council person concerned about, I think that's the best way to do it. Just a suggestion, I know it's seven people and a mayor and, you know, but we don't need to start in September ignoring council members' concerns because we all sent here to represent a ward and people and we need to respect that. Because once we start disrespecting each other, there's no end to what's going to happen next. So if the council member was told somebody would be here and they not here and this council member does not have information, then, you know, even though we're trying to get panhandlers off the street and this and that, I think we need to respect the process and respect these council members. Thank you.
One second, one second. The administration just let me know that they're going to pull this item.
Right, that's correct.
And so what I would, what I'm asking now is if Councilman Hartley and Councilman Parkinson can rescind their motion and second. Yes, sir.
I will.
Well, President, while I still on the floor, I just have one question to ask. How is this going to impact the business community in my ward? It's a lot of businesses that are affected, um, you know, from panhandling. And I just wanted, just some information on that so I can go back and tell the business owners.
So I think this specifically addressed public roadways and not private properties where businesses are located. We're talking two separate issues, you know, where businesses are located, of course, if you have people panhandling, trespassing, vagrancy, we can always respond to those calls and address that. This is specifically for intersections and roadways.
Thank you, sir. All right, Ms. Chloe?
Thank you very much, Mr. Stokes. Thank you, the administration. I just want to say this for the record. Votes to pass something is not a reason to vote, okay? Well, you may have votes to pass a lot of things, but you need to take into consideration and do business right in this city. And I did not like that comment at all. I know it's seven people and it only takes four to pass. Thank you.
Okay. So you remove your second?
Yes, sir.
I withdraw my motion.
All right, thank you. Now, we're going to move to claims, colleagues.
Order approving claims appearing at pages six, seven, four, to inclusive their own municipal docket of claims in the amount of three million, three hundred ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty-four cents for enmaking appropriation for the payment thereof.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved improperly, second. Jillian? Okay, hello, Ms. Jillian. If you could run through the large claims, please.
Good morning. Gillian Caldwell, Controller. The four largest claims on this docket are as follows. M V contract transportation, four hundred eighty-three thousand, nine hundred six dollars and ninety-nine cents. Fund one eighty-seven transportation for May twenty twenty-five fixed route services. The second largest claim is to M V contract transportation, four hundred fifty-one thousand, one hundred fifty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents. Fund one eighty-seven transportation for June twenty twenty-five fixed route services. The third largest claim is to M V contract transportation in the amount of two hundred seventy thousand, six hundred forty-five dollars and ninety cents from Fund one eighty-seven transportation for the payment of July twenty twenty-five para-transit services. The fourth claim is to M V contract transportation. The amount is two hundred sixty-eight thousand, three hundred twenty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. Fund one eighty-seven transportation for May twenty twenty-five para-transit services.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments about claims, colleagues?
Yes, thank you.
All right, Ms. Stokes?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, um, several items on here I have concern about, but normally I vote against claims and I'm trying to vote on claims because it's new administration and, and I know that being there only since July, it's just not the right thing to do, send a message that you're against claims when you've got a new mayor trying to get the train back on the track. We paying a lot of money on buses today. And the concern I brought up time and time again is extending the bus service, especially on Sundays. People try to go to church and everywhere else and no bus service. And we still have citizens sitting on the ground, I call it sitting on dirt, waiting on the bus, which is not right. They paying to ride the buses. We need to provide at least seating. I'm not talking about seating for the homeless to sleep on. We're talking about seating in these neighborhoods where people can sit on while they wait on buses. Most times, sometimes they late, sometimes they not, but elderly people just can't stand out there like they're trying to do. And we got to correct the problem. And I know you doing a lot with this, sitting in a short period of time, you only been there since July, but I hope y'all put it on the radar. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Stokes. Are there any more questions or comments about claims? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stokes. All right, payroll?
Order approving gross payroll, including payroll deduction claims, number three, two, six, four, three, to enmaking appropriation for the payment thereof.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved improperly, second. Any questions or comments about payroll? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, thank you. Colleagues, we're going to now move to items twenty-six and twenty-seven. We have our airport board and our airport leadership here. Just want to go ahead and take care of these items so they can get on back.
Order approving cosponsorship with the Jackson Municipal Airport Authority of Airport Improvement Program Grant Offer Number three dash two eight dash zero zero three seven dash zero seven five dash twenty twenty-five from the United States Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administrations Administration for purposes directly related to the Jackson Wylie Everest Airport International Airport under the auspices of Airport Improvement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved improperly, second. Colleagues, any questions or comments about item twenty-six? Hearing none, all in favor? Six zero, thank you. Item twenty-seven?
Order approving cosponsorship with the Jackson Municipal Airport Authority of Airport Infrastructure Grant Bipartisan Infrastructure Law Offer Number three dash two eight dash zero zero three seven dash zero seven seven dash twenty twenty-five from the United States Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration for purposes directly related to the Jackson Wylie Everest Airport, Jan. under the auspices of Airport Improvement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved improperly, second. Any questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Now, we're going to go back to item seven.
Order terminating the professional services agreement with Francis Ashley to provide administrative support for the Civil Service Commission.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved improperly, second. Any questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Item eight?
Order authorizing and ratifying the submission of a grant application in a participation agreement with the Delta Regional Authority to accept the Jackson Infrastructure Revitalization Project Grant to support the City of Jackson.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved improperly, second. Any questions or comments about item eight? Hearing none, all in favor? Six and one abstention, thank you. Item nine?
Order ratifying procurement of locksmith services by the municipal court for, from Mississippi Safe and Lock Inc. and authorizing payments to said vendor.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved improperly, second. Any questions or comments about item nine? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, seven zero. Colleagues, I'm going to table items ten and eleven. Item twelve?
Order approving the renewal of the International Association of Chief of Police, I A C P Net Membership for the Jackson Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved improperly, second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Item thirteen?
Order ratifying payment and approving emergency procurement for HVAC electrical work and furnace replacement of, at Jackson Police Department Precinct One, A Jones Services L S C invoice numbers one zero two three three and one zero zero one zero.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved improperly, second. Any questions or comments about item thirteen? Mr. Foot, I know we had a pretty lengthy conversation about this yesterday, but go forward.
My question is on this, this is different question than yesterday. This is regarding, um, rather, where's this, what fund does this money come from to fix this HVAC?
Is Ms. Jillian still here? Is anybody here from J P D who can point us in the right direction?
Mr. President, I can't answer that question, but just so it's clear, this is to pay for the electrical work on the A C chillers or air conditioning units that the previous council bought and were installed. And so this is just the electrical installation piece, I'm sorry, not the actual A C. The bigger expenditure was made previously, this is the smaller one to make sure that the A C is actually running. I defer to the chief to answer where the money's coming from.
That's right. It's my understanding this is for something that was already in place and it's, uh, I guess the total is included. That's what I've learned about it. The system's already in place, it needs, the system was already in place, it needs to be serviced or updated.
Yeah, I, I don't have any problem with, with paying it. I'm, I'm just trying to make sure, understand the money flows, where, where it comes from the, from our maintenance facility line or whether it comes from J P D's budget. I'm just trying to figure out the source of the funds and I'm all in favor of doing, fixing this stuff. I just want to find, I'm just wanting to understand where the money's coming from, which fund.
Chloe?
Uh, in the item, it tells you what fund it is and if somebody from finance is here, they can tell us exactly what fund it is.
It's got a number for the fund, but...
Yes, but I'm saying if somebody from finance is here, they can tell us what the number means.
No one is from finance here. Mr. Foot, you have any more questions?
No, I, I can still vote on it, but I just, at some point, if somebody, Mr. Tavison, could you, can we find out who, um, which fund this is coming from?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, any more questions or comments about item thirteen? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Administration pull item fourteen, item fifteen?
Order approving payment for past professional services performed by the Mississippi State Fire Academy for the Jackson Fire Department and its firefighters.
So moved.
It's been moved improperly, second. Any questions or comments about this item? Hearing, yes, sir. Mr. Parkinson?
Thank you so much. Uh, I think it's great that we're getting caught up on this, fully support this measure. I was just wondering if there could be an explanation as to why this is a past due invoice or what happens that we're just now getting to this particular invoice, these invoices, rather.
Chief Thomas, Jack, Fire Department, um, the state bills us after training and so that's why it's behind a train has been done and now it's time for payment. We can't control when they send the invoices, but when they send them, we put them in a queue and send them through the system as quickly as possible.
So the invoices that I'm looking at have a date of, uh, one says that it was issued February seventeenth and was due on April third. They both actually say that they're dated February seventeenth and were due on April third, but you're saying that even though they're dated February seventeenth, we just recently received these, is that correct?
I just recently received them in my office and once we receive them, we put them on a docket to be paid.
Okay, I appreciate that. If we could just make sure that whoever is receiving the invoices gets them to you as quickly as possible so that we don't have any past due invoices.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any more questions or comments about item fifteen?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Ms. Stokes.
Thank you so much. It's important that we pay our bills and pay them timely, but I want to thank these farmers for coming back to see the hall they used to come some time ago and show their commitment, let people see them, and I want to thank them for coming to community meetings, letting people know what we're going to try to do to stop these fires. You know, you got people that's going in these houses, setting them on fire and we got to stop it. One lady called me in front of them, they've been there some years and people start going into the houses that's abandoned and we're going to have to stop that and stop putting these farmers' lives in danger. They on that crack, smoking that dope and then they're going to put somebody's life in danger when they set the house on fire. So, Chief, thank y'all so much for showing up and I know it's getting ready to get cold and I know my ward really has a lot of fires and that wood is old and everything, so please don't thank y'all by y'all's self and trying to get some of these criminals or whatever you dope heads and everything else to understand that when they set a fire, somebody else's life is in danger because they got to go put it out. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments about item fifteen? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Item sixteen?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Before you get to sixteen, I can answer Councilman Foot's question on thirteen. There's a police general fund allocation, that's where the electrical work is being paid for those A Cs at Precinct One. Police general fund allocation.
All right, thank you. Item sixteen?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement with the Jackson Firefighters Association, I A F F Local eighty-seven.
So moved.
All right, it's been moved improperly, second. Any questions or comments about this item, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Item seventeen?
Order accepting five thousand dollars from Atmos Energy Corporation to the Jackson Fire Department Training Division.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved improperly, second. Any questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Item eighteen?
Order accepting the bid submitted by Ocean Foundation Repair Company of Jackson LLC doing business as Ocean Foundation Solutions and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement with Ocean Foundation for repair of the foundation at the Grove Park Community Center.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved improperly, second. Any questions or comments about item eighteen? It's been moved improperly second and the questions or comments about item eighteen? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. The administration also pull number nineteen, item twenty.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute change orders one zero zero dash one zero one and related documents to the contract two zero two four 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 three With Quality Communications Inc. For security camera system solution of the Jackson Public Transportation System J Tran.
So move.
All right, it's been moved improperly second and the questions or comments about item twenty? Hearing none, all in favor?
Seven zero.
Seven zero, thank you. Item twenty one.
Order ratifying and authorizing the mayor to execute an extension with I V S Inc. Doing business as Angel Track to provide mobile surveillance surveillance camera systems for the city of Jackson's Public Transportation System J Tran.
So move.
Second. It's been moved improperly second and the questions or comments about this item.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I want to thank everyone involved from the mayor and People dealing with the bus service, we just saw a situation where a person was injured on a bus in another city in another state. We got to have all eyes on these buses and transportation to make sure people know that they are safe. And I just thank this administration, everybody for recognizing early, we're gonna prevent something before we allow someone to be hurt on our buses.
Thank you.
Thank you, any more questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, seven zero. Item twenty two.
Order ratifying procurement of tools and supplies and repair parts by the Traffic Division of Department of Public Works from Chris Haynes Electric Supply Inc. And authorizing payments to said vendor.
So move.
Second. All right, it's been moved improperly second and the questions or comments about item twenty two? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, colleagues, I'm gonna hold twenty three for executive session, item twenty four, please.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute memorandum of understanding with Heinz County, Mississippi to provide for coordination between their respective departments Of public works for infrastructure work performed by Heinz County and the city of Jackson, Mississippi.
So move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved improperly second, colleagues, if y'all could please, you know, a little hard to hear me, if you could just please speak into your mic. I really appreciate it. All right, so it's been moving properly second and the questions or comments about item twenty four? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero. All right, twenty five.
Order ratifying the acceptance of a grant sub award from Jackson State University in the amount of one million dollars and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents Necessary to said sub award.
So move.
Second.
All right, it's been properly second, questions or comments, Mr. Harley?
Uh, yes, perhaps the mayor, chief, Mr. Taverson might know. Can you give me just a little bit of background on this? This is provided from Jackson State to the to the city of Jackson.
Correct, Jackson State took the leadership role in procuring this grant for the United States Department of Agriculture. And this was a grant that allowed for, in a in a very broad and general sense, urban forestry. But that doesn't mean you're planning to forest in the city. What it means is you're improving greenery so we can have breathable air and beautification as well. And so Jackson State applied for this, included the city of Jackson as a proposed subgrantee of one million of the two million dollars that Jackson State received. Of that one million dollars, the city is will have to spend that as the grant was applied for, but it will beautify Greenwood Cemetery, Beautify along Lynch Street, beautify along Robert Smith Parkway. So there will be beautification and cleanup efforts as well as some planting of new vegetation in those areas All as outlined in the proposed grant that Jackson State submitted for. I know that's the heart of your district, I think you're gonna see some very positive results over the five years of this grant And beautification and cleanup in key areas that you've been trying to focus on. Ultimately, I don't know what was presented between Jackson State and previous city council when this process started, I just know where we are now. For those of you who may know him, Curtis Upkins, I know several of you are familiar. Mr. Upkins is the individual at Jackson State who is actually gonna be administering the grant and working with the city as subgrantee.
Will there be any 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 of the money allocated for? I'm familiar with that forestry grant, and it's from, I think, the Department of Forestry. Uh, but part of it is for global warming and and lessening the thermal effect Around waterways and entryways. Will there be any use for the entryways from the city? Uh, I know we have two twenty, we have Capitol Street, we have uh by Rush Boulevard, Terry Road, et cetera. And and before you answer that, that'd be my last question. Want to say hats off to Dr. Fran Bridges, she was one of the moving pieces behind getting this started. And she is now, I believe, the project director overall for the overall grant. But could you address that, will it be used for the gateways?
Uh, wouldn't it be used for those gateways? So the emphasis will be on tree canopy expansion at Livingston Park. I think all of us who are talking about the zoo realize it's really Livingston Park that we need to be talking about, the zoo is part of the footprint. So a big piece of this sub grant award will go towards improving beautification, the entryway, planting new plants and redoing the forestry at Livingston Park. The other focus, of course, will be the Dr. Smith Parkway and the zoo. There will also be some flood mitigation control work done on J R Lynch Street Watershed. Any of us who've dealt with that over the last twenty five years know that that has been a challenge no matter what's been done. So we'll do that, and then the other will be cemetery and recreation space enhancements at Cedar Long, Willow Park Cemetery, Forest Hill Baseball Field, and there's something tied in here with Greenwood Cemetery as well, I believe. So that's what they've represented to the federal government, they would use the money for. Dr. Francis hit it out the park, in my opinion. Every project that's named in this sub award from Jackson State is something that needs to be done That council members have spoken of in areas that need to be addressed. So she deserves her flowers, and I think quite frankly, the city is absolutely blessed to have caught on to the coattails of Jackson State. And this is this is how local government should work.
Absolutely, thank you, sir. All right, any more questions or comments about item twenty five?
Comment, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I think Jackson State and the city of Jacksonville working together. We all recognize how important Jackson State is to this city. And I recognize Supervisor Graham and the work he has done In District One. But I'm concerned about District Five where I reside also. I ride down Arbor Vista and Alka Vista and people keep their homes up. Got people like Alice Clog and Dr. Smith and all these people still live over there. And if Graham and others can pave streets, it just means that District Five need to pave streets in the city of Jackson, we get very little paid than District Five. You know, it makes no sense, don't take all the money to the county to pave streets when we paying seventy percent of these taxes. You know, treat us right, treat us fair. You know, and it Jackson State again, I'm thankful for what they're doing with this, it's good, but we need to Make a lot of improvements around the Jackson State University area And not watch it go down because these some of them are older now. And then once it's so far down, we can't bring it back up, so Again, I just hope that the board of supervisors and I send a letter out to them That they would do the right thing in District Five, pave some streets, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Any more questions or comments about this item? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. College gonna go to item twenty eight.
Approval of the August eighteen twenty twenty five regular zoning meeting minutes.
So move.
It's been moved improperly second and the questions or comments? All right, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Item twenty nine.
Order of the Jackson City Council authorizing the mayor's office to eliminate, merge, combine, or otherwise reduce the number of departments within the city of Jackson budget.
So move.
Second. It's been moving it properly second, Mr. Stokes, this is your item.
Mr. President, um. Mr. President. Sometimes we need to recognize in this city that The largest city in the state of Mississippi. There's a lot of moving parts. And this administration been in office Not two years, not twenty years, he talking about two months. And they putting out fire after fire after fire. We believe that with all that need to be done in this city, we have to respect The timeframe when our population had declined and was at this level. Not when we was at almost two hundred thousand people, we talking about competing against Places like Nashville and Houston and Dallas. Where for shrinking population, we just cannot afford to have As many departments as we have or what we had when we had a large population. And we're asking the mayor's office to look at and let them determine where we need to go. Because we got to have money To run this city. Everything is going up. And we got to put ourselves in a position that we can survive Throughout the year. This budget is different because they didn't have a chance to massage it, really see it or anything else. Next year's budget would be a more hands-on budget by the administration and some of the new council members, they They've been here Two months also. Most of the things had already been said. But by state law, we got to what? Have something done by September fifteenth, and we're gonna follow the law. But after we follow the law, We gonna start getting ready for next year's budget Where we can really, this administration can put their hands on the sand, this what we believe need to happen. But we're with this item, asking them to reduce the number of departments. Not the council saying we want this done, that done, let the administration, that's who the people said, they want to be the mayor. And we need to respect the will of the people, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stokes, are there any more questions or comments about this item? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you.
Oh, we gonna hold item thirty, Mr. President.
Okay, we hold item thirty. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. The thing about thirty Lake High Co is is several issues, number one. For the long, we thought Lake High Co was in Ward Three, then they said it's in Ward Two. But we think that people who around it, part of it, is at fault, that we all have a chance to just talk about.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, so we'll hold.
Yes, I appreciate that. Item thirty one.
Resolution of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi in support of voiding the contract with New Way Mississippi Inc. For poor performance and failure to address litter and bridge cleaning.
So move.
Second. It's been moved improperly second and the questions or comments about this item?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. President. It's important that We're spending almost a half million dollars on this item. And if you start count over the years, we spend a lot of money On trash pickup and those things. The citizens keep saying That the city's still trashy. We gotta try something new. If it's not working, don't just keep going down that road. We got to try something new. Let's stop this city because it's not, it has not always been a trashy city. Jackson was not always trashy. It's been a beautiful city, and we're gonna bring the beauty back. But if we're gonna spend money, then you gotta do the job. Don't just get paid and, you know, and I saw them on North Side Drive yesterday, ten people Huddled together walking. Now that makes sense to nobody when you can do two on one side of the street and then put somebody in another area. No way ten people going up to down the street, somebody picking up trash, somebody not picking up. You know, it's too many opportunities for young people, we got, we got these teenagers that need jobs on Saturdays and Sundays and You know, there's too many opportunities, we just don't have a half a million dollars throw away. Not in Jackson now, we just we just don't, one time in Jackson, we had a lot of money. But you got a lot of things need to happen in this city. And we can't ignore people saying that the city is too trashy, thank you.
All right, Mr. Harley?
Yes, and I echo the sentiments of my colleague. I like to say in West Jackson, we have a saying, we don't, we don't believe it till we see it. We haven't seen this crews around picking up litter. And 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 there's that the expectation that whenever we have someone and it's such an important job That we have to make sure that they are out there doing the job that we're paying them to do because There's a reason that they're getting paid. The same with the the lots, the same with the side of the roads, we have to see a difference. And so I'm calling, I I highly endorse this, look, let's board all contracts where folks aren't delivering. Especially when it comes to aesthetics of our city, which leads to crime and other things as well. So I just wanted to echo the sentiments of Ward Five as well, thank you.
Any more questions or comments? Ms. Clay?
Thank you. I agree with terminating the contract if they're not cleaning up or doing whatever, but I just want to make sure we have the terms of the contract right as to what they were supposed to do. And I think it's solely paper in this contract, but I have no problems with us hiring kids, et cetera. And I hope that we do do that instead of taking this contract and awarding it to somebody else.
All right, thank you, any more questions or comments? Yes, sir.
I had a similar question, is there someone who can speak to the terms of of this contract, I'm just not familiar with it?
I saw Ms. Weathers earlier. Well, City Attorney.
Drew Martin in here, I'm City Attorney, I don't have it in front of me, but I'm generally familiar with the terms.
Is it to clean up the entire city?
Uh, no, I don't believe it was. It's I believe it's only portions, but I'd have to look at it to be sure on that, I can't remember which areas it covers.
But Mr. Stokes and Mr. Harley, it's definitely in your wards and they're definitely not picking up?
I have seen no litter crews picking up along Highway eighty, Robertson Street, Capitol Street, Bible Rush Boulevard and any other major intersections or roadways in my area. And it may be some other responsibility, but they're not doing it, no one is doing it.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you. Mr. President. When you have an opportunity to do work for the city, You must take the work as some serious. You can't just keep getting paid, this this is not the first contract. And I'm not going to humbly, they've already gotten, but this is almost a half a million dollars. They just had a big activity in Jackson two weeks ago at the Battle of the Bands. Bands coming, college bands coming from near and far, first football game. Bridge on Woodrow Wilson leading to the stadium where people go full of paper. Whether it came off a bus or whatever else. You have a responsibility to make the city look good. You're making almost a half a million dollars. You cannot allow guests to come into your city and you looking at trash. I'm not pointing a finger at anybody. But if you're not gonna do the job, you're not gonna perform the contract, you do not take a contract, thank you.
Thank you, any more questions or comments about this item?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I got with our solid waste manager and with our interim public works director, Mr. Caldwell, and we discussed this contract. We have no reason to object or push back if the majority of the council wants to terminate the contract.
All right, thank you, I just want to make sure that y'all understand, this is just a resolution, it is only administration to cancel the It is only the administration to cancel the contract, okay? Just, we got media in here, we don't need anything misrepresented. All right? Anything else on this item? Mr. Foot, you have some? Okay, okay, all right. Uh, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Item thirty-three.
Order authorizing the City of Jackson to opt into the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy action.
So moved. Second, it's been moved improperly, second. Colleagues, the reason you got a new agenda today, or late yesterday, is because of the addition of this item. I, I, I gave the clerk some copies of the email thread, uh, for this item. Uh, HR has had this item since July, and legal got it yesterday. And so if the City Attorney could speak to that, and the clerk is gonna give you a copy of what I received yesterday. Mr. Martin?
Yes, sir. So, uh, the short version of this is Purdue Pharma's in bankruptcy. Uh, the city's already actually a party in the bankruptcy as related to opioid claims. This is different, though. This is related to our third-party, uh, plan that is self-funded by the city. There was a, a bankruptcy order that would have provided for some payouts to entities in the city situation. It was objected to by, among other entities, United Healthcare, which is the city's healthcare provider, because it didn't provide enough. There's a second, now amended, uh, bankruptcy, uh, resolution that is available to opt into. If the city wants to opt into it, then, uh, we need to provide certain information to the claims administrator by tomorrow, um, which is the deadline that's in here. September thirtieth, the end of the month, is actually when, uh, everything goes to the court, but the administrator has to have the information advanced. The advantage of opting in is very simple. Uh, under the new bankruptcy order, there are two, basically two separate pots of money that are gonna be combined, one third into one big pot. One, one part of that is a third of it, which is provided by Purdue Pharma itself. The rest is, uh, tens of millions of additional dollars that are provided by the shareholders that were involved with Purdue Pharma in this. So it's a much bigger pot if you have the shareholders, too. Uh, the flip side of that is, any party that wants to opt in and collect whatever share we might be entitled to from that pot, have to agree to release any claims they would have against the shareholders. Uh, the shareholder involvement is the basic thing that United fought for. I have to tell you in all candor, because I haven't had this for very long, that I'm not as well-versed on this as I'd like to be. But on initial review of it and doing some research last night and talking internally, I, I don't see any downside of opting in. I think anybody that doesn't opt in is going, if you don't opt in, you will only have access to that one-third pot. So that in itself, I think is efficient, and it's not clear there would be, uh, claims worth pursuing for any individual entity, uh, to opt out and then pursue those separately and incur the litigation costs that would go along with that. So it looks like an opt-in is the right thing to do, but, but I say that with the caveat that I've, that's about a 24-hour review to make that determination.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Parkinson, and then Mr. Foot.
Thank you. I have two questions. First, just so I understand, I understand there's a lot of opioid talk and the, the state legislature got some money, and we got some money, and there's the AG's office got some money. This is separate from that?
This is separate from that, and I'm happy to, I can't give you an update on those today, but we do get regular payouts on those, and I can give the council an update on that as well.
Okay. And my other question is, I want to understand, uh, because I appreciate the, the spot that we're in. If we want to do this, we have to do it by tomorrow.
We're supposed to email the, the, uh, plan administrator by September tenth?
Sure. And you just received it extremely recently.
Yesterday.
Yesterday. So my question is, uh, the way this is phrased, order, what I'm trying to get at is, what I would love, you need council action immediately. What I would love is their way for us to structure this to say, if you go back and you have a couple more hours later today, to sort of like, think about it and, and reflect on it, and you still feel like it's a good move, you have our, our authority to do so. But if you go back later today and you're like, actually, wait a minute, this doesn't make the most sense, does this, if we vote on this today, does it force you to enter into this?
No, it does not. It does, we will have some time to continue to look into it, and I, absolutely, if it looks like there's some reason not to do it, then I will make that decision and let you know.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Foot.
Thank you, Mr. President. My, my question is if, if there's some money that comes from being in these lawsuits and it comes to, back to the city, does it go into our health plan, self-funded health plan?
Generally speaking, whenever we receive money through any sort of settlement, it goes back to the general fund.
But the, but the expenses borne by the opioid were, came out of our healthcare plan, you would assume?
That, that, that's basically correct. So this, if you look at this, uh, one of the pages says, the, the trust will be valued based on the costs of certain opioid prescriptions that were given out to city, uh, employees that were on the health plan, plus medical costs incurred for certain medical services, et cetera, et cetera. The short answer is the council and the administration can decide to use the funds how they want, but it would, it would go to the general fund when it first comes in.
Thank you. Mr. Stokes?
You started off by saying that we're using a law firm currently?
On, on the other opioid cases, the cases that are, um, that have been ongoing for several years, there's an outside counsel firm that was hired prior to my ever being City Attorney. Uh, we haven't changed horses with it, we've just kept who we've got, but they've been pursuing those claims for us.
Are they a local firm?
It is a local firm. Yes, sir. It's Sheila Bojor and Associates.
Who?
Sheila Bojor and Associates.
Okay. Are we merging?
This, this is separate from that, and to go, to speak to Council Parkinson's question addresses yours as well, we have reached out to them, we reached out last night. As of the meeting starting this morning, I haven't heard back yet. One of my questions is, is there any, is there any interplay here that might make, that might change the calculus? As of right now, we don't believe there is, but we're gonna get confirmation from them that that is the case. These should be two separate settlements for two separate types of claims.
Now, what we hearing today, is this gonna be a local firm, a national firm?
We won't need an outside counsel to pursue this. There's already bankruptcy counsel that will save us those expenses if we opt in. We won't need any additional attorney.
Do we have minority participation included in all of this?
That I don't know.
Okay. But it is required, right? Minority participation?
Well, not for this opt-in on this class. Minority, maybe I'm not understanding the question. Minority participation in what regard?
Well, if we're looking at, um, the City of Jackson, um, joining in with other law firms and entities, law firm, it just seem like whatever monies that we're fighting for, that the city should have some kind of minority participation, a law firm involved.
In, in this case, so normally I would agree with you. In, in this case, there's already an order approved by the bankruptcy court that decides on a formula and a set of money. And then the city will submit information as requested by the administrator and the bankruptcy trustee, so that they can then plug those numbers in and decide what entities get what amounts. There's just no need for any outside counsel for us on this.
So we're gonna submit through our, our legal team?
Yes, yes. Working with HR, we'll get the information we need and we'll submit it directly to the trustee and the court.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
But do we currently have any minority law firms and lawyers?
We, we do, um, we, we do. Not working on this, but yes, sir, we do.
So are they excluded? Do we have minority lawyers automatically excluded?
No, sir. So we have, if you're speaking of other outside counsel we have for other cases, we have minority attorneys that represent the city in some other matters. On this matter, we don't have any outside counsel, no lawyer of any sort, other than, thi, this is something that if we opt in can be completely handled in-house, that won't require any additional expense on behalf of the city, including attorney's fees, other than what the bankruptcy court charges for the, the national bankruptcy, uh, attorneys that are working on it.
Okay, now we'll put a pin in that.
Sure.
But we already have another company.
On the, on the other opioid settlement, uh, that's where we're represented by Bojor and Associates, uh, uh...
Do we have minority participation?
In that, no. I'm, I'm trying to think real quick. I think there's only three lawyers in that firm currently. Um, they're all, all three are female.
So we can't get minority particip, well, I so moved that we have minority participation in that item that, that we already have established with a law firm. And if we have anything that with this bankruptcy law firm, or this bankruptcy issue, that the city, legal department cannot handle on their own, that we will provide minority participation. So moved.
Second.
Okay. Clerks, you got that? All right, it's been moved improperly, second question, Mr. Hartley?
Yes, um, and, and, yeah, look, I support the, uh, the measure. I just did have any, had a, just a minor question, that is, will we be taking away the effectiveness of the city government, uh, following the suit, uh, by deferring it to another organization? Or would they be working strictly, uh, in, you know, in concert with the city, by authority with the city to do this?
So, so in this case, because it's in bankruptcy already, there's, you know, so the way the bankruptcy, let me back up a little bit. The way the bankruptcy would have worked initially is, there would have been notice that Purdue Pharma was, was bankrupt, and there would be a question as to, uh, who are the creditors, right? Who is owed money? And, uh, those generally don't require their own attorney, depending on the situation. But here, uh, United Health and its attorneys objected to the original bankruptcy settlement for this portion of the proceeds. Uh, they appeared to have notified the city of that, and then they worked hard to get this, well, I say they worked hard, I don't know what they did, but they worked and got a second, uh, uh, bankruptcy settlement here. So the short answer is, I don't see any need for an outside counsel unless we opt out. If the city does, if the city were to choose to opt out, then we would need to file a separate lawsuit outside of, a separate claim outside of the bankruptcy settlement, um, which may or may not work because there aren't any additional funds to obtain from in a bankruptcy.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Now, now, in, in my mind, and let me know if I'm wrong, this is kind of like how you get an email, say there was a data breach from Apple, and you submit your claim for the...
It's a lot like that.
And you get your 23 cent?
Yes, it's a lot like that. I think, I think we can live for more than 23 cents, but otherwise, that's the right analogy. You don't go hire a lawyer at that point.
Right, right, right.
The court, the bankruptcy court makes those decisions.
Gotcha. Mr. Stokes and Ms. Clay?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. From starting this conversation, uh, was mentioned that we were contacting, uh, some lawyers who supposed to have been doing business with the city, and we were waiting to hear back, whether they're gonna be involved.
No, I can clarify that. So what I was trying to say was this, because these are two separate matters that both involve the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy, I want to make sure that by opting into this bankruptcy settlement, the city is not somehow harming the claims that it's already settled and receiving proceeds from the other settlement for. I want to make sure we're not hurting one settlement by entering into a second one. I think the answer is we are not, uh, but I want to make, make sure that's the case.
Well, what I'm saying is that if we gonna have this other firm, whatever they gonna do, if they gonna do anything with this one or the one they have, we want some minority participation.
I understand. Yes, sir.
All right, so we have a motion on the, oh, Ms. Clay, calm down, I'm coming here.
I understood what Mr. Stokes was saying, and he wasn't saying that we need an attorney for the new item. He's saying that if we need an additional attorney or anything on the case, then consider minorities on what we already have with Sheila, whomever, sperm.
I understand.
Okay, that's clarification.
I understand that.
All right. Are there any more questions or comments about the amended? Okay, Mr. Parkinson?
Sorry, I thought I understood, but now I'm a little bit confused. Mr. Stokes, is your, um, suggestion that with our other opioid settlement fund that we already have outside counsel for, that we remove them and look for minority-owned legal?
No, no, we're not removing anybody. What we're saying is that, let's bring some more people to the table.
Yeah.
Have some more participation, you know? I don't know how to make, Councilmember Clay said it clear than I guess I could say it, but we're not trying to kick anybody off. We trying to add some people on. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, is that as it relates to the other opioid settlement or this bankruptcy settlement?
Well, normally the legal department can talk to lawyers, and they can talk in without us.
I understand.
Thank you.
Call for question?
All right. Well, if you call for question, we still gotta get a motion, but I think we're ready to vote on the, that amendment?
Yeah.
All right, so we're gonna vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment? Oppose? Five one? Who oppose? Okay. Okay, all right. So now we have the item as amended on the floor. Any questions or comments as, on the item as amended? Any, all right, all in favor? Six zero. All right. We're gonna go ahead and, uh, Stokes, Mr. Stokes?
Yes, sir.
Get your discussions thirty-four and thirty-five out of the way.
Okay.
I'm gonna need you to stick around for executive session.
(laugh) Ms. Clay already told.
Okay.
Like I told you that. Don't say, you can't talk about it, 'cause telephone, telegram, tele, because I'm a tele.
It's not illegal to tell it, is what comes after tell.
Yeah, just don't say.
All right.
Um, thank you. Mr. President, I'm gonna ask Mr. Peters to come forward, if he would, on the, uh, J.C. Park, Derby City Gordon Park, Bailey Avenue discussion. Um, we have a church that has been trying to help with the park in terms of putting cameras in the park. And the city has told them they were gonna do certain things that still has not materialized. Mr. Peters, would you tell us the name of the church and, and what the ladies who normally we meet with? This was part of Ward Seven, now it's part of Ward Three, and we're trying to make sure we keep a commitment to some, a church that's trying to make the park safe. Yes, sir.
So, um...
State your name if you don't mind, please.
Northminster Baptist Church. My name's Mike Peters, and we have been working in that neighborhood all up and down Bailey Avenue and Wood Street, Galloway Elementary School for twenty, twenty-five years. And we've approved the funds, we've approved the funds to put security cameras all in J.C. Park because, to make it more valuable to the neighborhood. But our security people told us cameras are no good because none of the lights work. And so we're just asking the city to get the lights working, and then we'll put the cameras in, we'll turn them, we'll have them, uh, where they get monitored at the command center and all that. So we just feel like it's a good improvement for the neighborhood to have this done.
That's it. Mr. President, we, we have had commitments, and we're just trying to finalize those commitments that, um, lights on, that's the main thing, getting the lights on in the park. Once the lights on in the park, then the cameras, the money's already there for the cameras that the church is paying for.
We're ready. We got, we're ready to pay for it, get the cameras installed, get them hooked up with the central command center, JPD, and all, all of that, all of that'll be on us, but we've been told it's a waste of time until lights working.
And there's currently no lights in the park, uh, Mr. Mayor. But, um, this is, um, a church trying to say, uh, for the kids that go to Galloway School and, uh, different organizations in that area, where the children cannot use the park, or dope dealers have called themselves claiming city parks, uh, we're gonna have cameras and we're gonna have things to show what's going on, and we're tied directly in with our police department, that, uh, parks can then become a place for children to play again. Parks are, anybody can use city parks, but we'll make sure children can enjoy a park again in Jackson. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
We will ensure that the lights are installed at J.C. Park and W.C. Gordon Park.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Peters, for coming. And the name of the church again is Northminster Baptist Church.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a comment too.
Sure.
Thank you, the, thank you, Mr. Peters. Thank you, Ms. Stokes, for bringing Mr. Peters in. The, this is a great example of a public-private partnership that I think is something we really need to pursue and embrace with churches, with other, you know, institutions, that businesses, civic clubs, whatever, to get extra value added to our park system that we've got so many parks to take care of. And this is a great example of what we can do to, you know, enhance the quality of life across the city. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Stokes, item thirty-five?
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I want to thank Councilwoman Leon since this was her baby she got this started. Northminster put me in when they put this, that Wood Street is now Ward Three. And I want to thank them for bringing up the speed. And that's what we're trying to do with the next item also. We named the swimming pool at Mary Jones for Russell Davis. And the swimming pool's been closed for years and years and years. And a partnership was started on Mill Street at their swimming pool. And we're trying to create that partnership with Operation Shoe String, Cherry Grove Baptist Church and other churches. Where we can start in September, getting ready for a swimming pool that can be open in the spring of 2026. We just want to bring it to the mass, off to the council members' attention. When children in the poor neighborhoods don't have swimming pools, when I was growing up, we swam in the creeks. And kids drown. They think they can swim because they're in the bathtub, thinking they swim. And then when they jump in the creek, there's no lifeguards or anything, they drown. So what we're trying to do is get this pool back up and open and running and try to get the city, Operation Shoe String again in the churches in some kind of working relationship where we can have a pool next summer for poor kids who really want to swim and some need to learn how to swim. We've talked to some of the church in our red shoe string and they feel like they can do something, working together. But we want the leadership to come, if we can, from the City of Jackson, putting them together, letting them know what we can do, what we can't do. And still in April, May, trying to do something, open up a swimming pool. In June, we will start in September. So we have enough time to get it planned and get it done. So everybody can feel that we're not trying to rush and do something and do nothing. We're gonna take our time and do it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments about discussion item thirty-five? All right, colleagues, I need a motion to go into closed session for the purposes of going into executive session to discuss a personnel matter and pending litigation.
So move.
Second.
All right. Second, it's been moving properly. Second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, the seven-zero? All right. Now, we're gonna just wait. All right. If you are not party to this. All right, all right, we're back. We are out of executive session. No official action was taken. Item twenty-three was pulled by the administration. Now, colleagues, we will, where's my agenda? Thank you. All these stacks of paper here. All right, now we will move to item thirty-seven. Monthly reports. Can I get a verbal from each council member if you received a report? All right?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Yes, okay. Mr. Foot? All right, thank you. All right. Now we're gonna move to announcements. Mr. Parkinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, there's a few things happening on Saturday that the city should be aware of. First, we have the Mississippi Book Festival. That's gonna be all day downtown. Highly encourage people to check that out. It's a free festival, really fun time. Also on Saturday is the Roll-Off Dumpster Day. That's gonna be at Apple Ridge Shopping Center, 1040 McDowell Road. You can drop off small appliances, furniture and the like. And there is a community cleanup event from eight to noon. It's gonna be focused on McDowell, Terry, Raymond, Floyd and Greenwood. If you are interested in either volunteering at that event or they are in need of some sponsorships for that event, I encourage you to check out either the Facebook page of Representative Fabian Nelson or text Brittany Bowman at six zero one four two one zero eight seven seven. Additionally, the City of Jack, there's a great group, the Downtown Partners, is helping to spearhead an effort. Jackson is competing for a grant to provide live music downtown in our parks. And there's over a hundred cities in this competition, including some big ones like Miami, Chicago and Austin. But as of this morning, we are in eighth place, so we are doing well and competing against some heavy hitters. And we need everybody to vote for this. And the way that you vote is very, very simple. You just open your text messages and you send the word Jackson. You just send the word Jackson to the following number. It's eight seven seven four zero nine five five two five. I'm gonna read it again. Eight seven seven four zero nine five five two five. You just text the word Jackson to that number and that'll help us out. Lastly, just this morning, the New York Times released the fifty best restaurants in America. And I am pleased to share that Mayflower is on that. So Jackson Eatery is presented in the New York Times just this morning as one of the best places to eat in the country.
Thank you so much. Are there any more announcements? Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to remind the members of the council that last Thursday, we had a press conference to announce the kickoff of, official kickoff of notification and marketing efforts for the National Folk Festival, which will take place November seventh, eighth and ninth. If you or any of your constituents might have an interest in volunteering, we'd love to work with you in that regard. And if you'll just approach me and our staff and we'll get you the website and other ways you can contact for volunteering.
All right, thank you. Is there anything else to come before this body? Hearing none, we are adjourned.